Well, as the meeting chairperson, I guess I will call the Sandusky City Planning Commission Meeting of October 28, 2020 to order at just a couple of minutes after 4:30. So if we may have the roll call.
Mr. Magori.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Whalen. Mr. Zuloff.
Here.
Ms. Castiel.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
He may be absent.
Okay, and Greg, you said Commissioner Meiner would not be attending today?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Volz, I'm trying to remember from meeting from, from group to group, do we need to excuse those two that are not in attendance or not?
We do, we do.
We, we do not, or we do?
We do not.
Okay, all right, so I guess the, the next order of business is the matter of the approval of the minutes of the September 23, 2020 meeting. Would any, has, has everybody received those and is anybody prepared to make a motion to approve those minutes or make recommended additions or changes?
Mr. Chairman, David Miller, I'd recommend approval of the minutes.
Okay, so moved, is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any, any opposed? Okay, minutes have been approved. Moving on to the agenda to the matters of new business, Mr. Jeff Palmer, on behalf of the Central Catholic Athletic Boosters has submitted a site plan, application for a temporary parking area at 407 West Jefferson Street and 426 Central Avenue. If staff could educate us, I, we've all received the packet, but if the staff could educate us, educate us a little further on this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a, a site that just recently got demolished at the corner of Decatur Street and Jefferson. You had some housing and some mixed-use buildings on it for a long time. The school is looking to use the site for a parking area and a queue area for people dropping their children off at school. The applicant has applied for site plan approval to add a temporary parking lot here. It's zoned residential business. The property is surrounded by other residential business and public facility parcels and The applicant is proposing to use this for, as a temporary use, as they kind of fund a more thorough revamp of the area. It was kind of made more important when a recent change to Madison Street occurred this summer, which made the street two-way from one-way, which reduced some on-street parking in the area. The applicant also stressed that this should alleviate some queuing issues of vehicles on-street and ensure they are not blocking intersections. The project will also include some bicycle parking, so children are able to ride their bikes to school and have a location to lock their bikes up as well. We'd also like to note, as mentioned in our report, that this site could hold some midterm-to-long-term importance for the city of Sandusky and St. Mary's Central Catholic with its ability to be used in the future to create a more campus-like environment around the school. Some ideas were mentioned in the staff report for what that may or may not look like. This would be preferred, as these parcels were most recently used as housing rather than parking lots, and while parking lots could be buffered and landscaped well, they do tend to have negative effects on city living and transportation demands. But in conclusion, planning staff recommends approval of the proposed site plan for this location contingent on the approvals for a period of two years, at which time the applicant will need to come back to planning commission for another temporary approval or permanent site plan approval. If long-term use of this site plan is, site is desired to be parking or rezoned to P auto parking would be required prior to site plan approval or a conditional use permit granted. Two, the applicant improperly maintains markings on the proper temporary service, and three, installation of bicycle parking for students and teachers occurs. The applicant is on the line for other questions and comments and be able to help you to answer anything as well.
Thank you, Mr. Volz. Mr. Volz, do we need to swear in the applicant or just, we're just asking questions?
This is not an adjudication hearing, so that.
Okay. Mr. Palmer, I have a question, I could have asked staff this. Who's the titled owner of this property right now?
Currently, there, there are two parcels. One is the Central Catholic Athletic Boosters, and then just recently, the property to the north was, which is held by the Diocese of Toledo, was previously the beneficial owner because it's a land trust for the diocese. The beneficial owner was just switched from the church to the school. So the two parcels, long answer, are the Central Catholic Athletic Boosters, now with the school being the beneficial owner of the property to the north.
Okay, and, and is the, are the two parcels ready to be used as you intend to use them in the short term? I mean, are, are they already finished off, filled in and with gravel, and can you drive on them right now, or would you have to do some work?
They are ready as is, and we've, we've held on parking blocks, we're ready to move, to put some parking blocks in to, to separate the sidewalk and put at each parking place pending approval of the commission.
Any, any questions for the applicant from other members of the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Zuloff.
I'm wondering why this is characterized as temporary. Is this not intended to be a, a long-term solution, or where, where else would the parking be besides street?
Well, I, go ahead, maybe Mr. Volz could answer that better.
I believe through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Zuloff, I think the, this is temporary because I don't, if they do a full-scale repaving of the site, it may alter the type of layout it has, how many parking spaces occurs on it, what type of improvements seem to occur in terms of landscape islands and lighting. That is why it is a temporary approval.
So how long would a temporary approval be good for?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the, our recommendation wa, was this approval would be for two years.
I see.
Okay, if I.
So at, at some point, if the use continued, the site would need to be improved to normal parking lot standards and meet site plan approval according to the standards we have for such uses.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions from other members of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, this goes a little beyond the scope of this immediate application, but it seems in the past, and I'm not sure, I kind of lose track of time, but I've heard discussions over the years about Central Catholic building a new school located elsewhere. Does this kind of preclude that, the whole temporary thing? Is it because there are still vague plans or hopes of doing something more comprehensive in another location, or is it really more like just temporary to waive the parking or the paving standards and so forth and give a little more time for the site to settle and, and lay it out? I'm, I'm not necessarily seeing a, a parking lot as contributing to a more campus-like setting per se, and it's really just intended to be a parking lot and, and really just waiving the time requirements to, to do the paving or to make improvements that would be consistent with our required parking lot configurations.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Sandusky Central Catholic has no intentions at this time of leaving the city of Sandusky. We're very happy and very proud of our location near downtown and, as, as we like to say in the, in the shadow of our steeples, we're very proud to be a part of Sandusky, and while there were discussions in years past about possibly moving out of the city and doing different things, that is no longer anything we are looking at. We're looking at ways that we can enhance our building, improve our building, and stay a part of the city of Sandusky and our current location for many years to come. The temporary portion of this is really, was really expedited with COVID, and our changes at our entrances of, instead of using a single entrance, using three, which led to the changes that Mr. Volz mentioned earlier on Madison Street. So we're temperature checking at each of three entrances, which lost parking on Madison Street, and then creates a queuing issue for stu, for parents after school as they wait for different dismissal times. We certainly intend to be here, we certainly intend to use the property for many years to come, but see the temporary approval of this lot to help in the short term while we continue to look at our long-term presence in the city.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up?
Yes, Mr. Miller, go ahead.
I, I'm just thinking about this now, in terms of the COVID, I know of other schools that are not as reliant on bus transportation this year, that the preferred way is to be dropped off by parents. Has that changed the demographic of people, of students coming and going, such that queuing is more of an issue than in the past, or is it just the change in configuration of the street direction and such?
The, the queuing is really an after-school issue, which is mainly, is done predominantly from our main exit on Decatur Street. So the, the, the issue is really more so the differing dismissal times that we have in our building to allow students not to be swarming out the doors en masse, but we have about a ten, ten to twelve-minute staggered dismissal to help students in traffic leave as we dismiss.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add one thing.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add to, of, of, Mr. Miller, that we do agree that a parking lot does not add to a campus-like environment. That was mentioned in the staff report. Ideally, staff in the city would like to see a building here at some point, knowing that this ultimately will be under the control of St. Mary's Central Catholic, and we'd just like to work with them any way possible to make it the best it can be in the long run.
Well, in response to that, I, I could envision that, that a parking lot could be, if not a great amenity, with appropriate landscaping and, and some little park-like amenities. It, it could be not unpleasant to, I mean, you can do, you can do a parking lot well or you could do it poorly, and done well, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that that would be unappealing, but, but it's good to know that the city is thinking of building in the long term and understand that that's up to St. Mary's.
As chairman, I'd just like to make an observation. I mean, school, school campuses, whether they're high school, grade school, or college, they require parking lots too, and as Mr. Miller just suggested, you can do them in a, in a positive way or not, there's conflicting interests here. I see the city, I mean, there were some old houses there, I think, that were torn down. I'm not totally familiar with which house was torn down, but there were some that needed upkeep, but we've, if we don't upkeep the houses, then we, we lose some history. On the other hand, there's a competing interest here that the, the school system requires what they require, and as far as the temporary aspect of it, I'm sure finances play a part of this too. So I think the application really is to say, we have a current need for some queuing and some parking, we'd like to do it as inexpensively as possible in the short term, and then maybe somewhere down the road, maybe the needs will change a little bit, but just to give some breathing room. So if we characterize it that, I think it's kind of a no-brainer to do, in my personal opinion, to do a temporary approach for a couple of years, let everybody get further down the road and then figure out what's needed and how we get there. So that, that's my observation. Anybody, any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
I'm, I have to say, I was mildly concerned that we were, not concerned, I just wanted to, I think I'm duty-bound to make sure we're not just evading the, the standards by deeming it temporary. I think I'm fairly persuaded that this, that's not what's going on here, that we really need some breathing room here. I suppose that's a stretch of a pun, but to, to figure out what's going to happen. I, I, I am, I, I do also observe that there's some broken-up sidewalks and stuff like that though, but I, I think we should still ensure that, that, that any sidewalks not be left in disrepair, but that's probably trivial to, to get that done. I might even, I haven't really studied the, the plan because, because it is temporary and I, so if, if, I would like to see this condition done, making sure that the sidewalks be in good repair considering that it's for a school. Other than that, I, I see no objections to what we're doing there.
Let me flip to something. Mr. Palmer, are you familiar with the staff recommendations on the application?
I have looked at those. We have discussed certainly the, the bike parking is something that, you know, the only hesitation we have is the location, whether it's there or on the school site, so that the preference that we would have is that they're on the block of the school as opposed to over there, so that students would, would not be walking or have to walk across the street.
Okay.
The other, the other items, yes, we are, not a, not a concern.
Thank you. Would anybody on the commission care to make a, a motion on this application?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
I would move that the application be approved with any conditions recommended by the staff and in addition that the, any, any sidewalk, needed sidewalk repair be executed in a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
Include the bike parking provision?
Uh, sure. I, I don't know.
Not to, to, not to exclude it.
Maybe, maybe I'm not ready for that motion yet.
Mr. Chairman, we don't require that, that bike parking is on this site, just somewhere on this, within the school location.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Miller?
Yes, yes, that's exactly.
Okay, so, so my, did, did we get my motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff on the, the motion that includes, I guess, adequate safety or adequate condition of the sidewalks. Do we know, are they acceptable as they exist right now, perhaps with some cracking?
Mr. Chairman, the, 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 what I see on Street View does show the site ready, but it doesn't, but it does show broken sidewalks, so I haven't visited the site, I'm, I'm sorry to say, didn't get a chance to do that, so I'm just, it may have already been done. If it's not, it should be done, and we're not talking, you know, it could be even temporary repairs, it just needs to be safe, and, and missing tiles and wouldn't be safe, but adequate repairs that would, that would meet reasonable standards for temporary would and might be, be reasonable, and I think that's, since it's a temporary site, I think temporary repairs would suffice.
I, I, that's what I thought you were saying. I just was wondering if the city would, would that be something that they would check on in any event? I mean, if, if you're, if there's a motion to do something with the sidewalks, we need to know what that includes or doesn't include.
We could work with Public Works and Mr. Palmer to do a site assessment or something along those lines, but.
And, and if, if the city deemed that there was nothing needed for safety right now, then I'm presuming that would comply with the motion that's on the table.
Correct.
Okay, all right, then I guess it's been moved and seconded. I would ask that the roll be called on the motion to approve subject to all staff conditions.
Mr. Magori.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff.
Yes.
And Ms. Castiel.
Yes.
Okay, motion is carried. Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you very much.
Good, good luck moving forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you, you too. Next on the order of new business is a site plan application submitted by Mr. Roger Bosh or Besch on behalf of Ziashun LLC, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, for a new addition to the existing building located at 1512 George Street. I would ask staff to educate us a little further on that application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for an addition on a building for private use. The site location is shown on the shared screen right now. When this application came in, I thought that this property was a single-family house, but it's just used for storage for a single person. It is zoned local manufacturing. The use will be maintained as just personal storage. You could kind of see a good view of the property on the pictometry view shown. It is surrounded by other limited, limited manufacturing zone parcels and some single-family housing nearby. But in conclusion, planning staff does recommend approval of the site plan. All the setbacks are met. There's no business here, it's all storage, so there is no required increase in parking, but we do condition approval that all, on all applicable permits being obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other applicable department or agencies. Also, if exterior lighting is added to the plan, the applicant must submit for staff approval. the plan, the applicant must submit for staff approval of the lighting plan and fixtures so that we can en- ensure that they are shielded parallel to the ground and to neighboring houses and properties. Uh, that is all I have. I believe the applicant is on the phone with us, uh, if there are future, or if there are other questions for them. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bolts. Um, i- is Mr. Bolts correct? Is the applicant on phone?
Maybe not.
Okay. All right. Um, uh, do any of the, uh, commission, uh, members have questions for staff? Uh, hearing none, um, would anybody care to make a motion on the application?
Mr. Chairman, um.
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
I'll recommend approval, I'll recommend approval subject to staff conditions.
Okay. Is there a, a second to that motion?
I'll second. Mr. Whalen.
Mr. Whalen. It's been moved and seconded. Um, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, uh, I would ask that the roll be called on the motion.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Mr. McGory?
Yes. So it appears that the motion has passed unanimously. Um, and I guess, I guess we'll move on to the next order of new business, which is a petition for the vacation of a sixteen-foot, five-inch alley located on 1404, fourteen, two fourteen twenty-four, Third Street, and various parcels on Fourth Street, submitted, uh, on be- by Mr. Bob Waldock on behalf of BSL Holdings LTD. Uh, if staff could perhaps educate us a little further in addition to what, or on top of what we've been provided.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, uh, you should see on your screen, this is the alley that is proposed to be vacated. It's just, uh, to the east of Fluke's parking lot. Um, the unimproved Arthur Street is just to the west of the alley. Um, the applicant's looking to vacate this. All neighboring property owners have signed the petition. Um, and so, per the Ohio Revised Code, uh, the part, the vacated alley would be split down the middle and to each adjacent property owner. Um, planning staff has no objection to this. We did hear from Public Works after the packets were sent out that they have no objection to this, as there are no utilities in the, this area and the next application areas. But, um, this, just after the fact that we, uh, in the next application we'll get to, we were, we'll ask that these parcels be combined. But in conclusion, planning staff has no objection to the city of Sudenduski Planning Commission recommending approval of the requested vacation to the City Commission, uh, because vacation of the alley will not adversely impact the adjoining properties, and all the adjacent property owners have signed the petition. This right of way is no longer of use for the public, and with this in mind, planning staff recommends that a recommendation of approval to City Commission be given.
Thank you, Mr. Bolts. I have a follow-up question. Uh, is it my understanding that as to the north-south parcels that are separated by this platted alley, that the, the north-south parcels, in all cases, are owned by the same property owners?
Yes, they, um, most of them are. There are some parcels along Third Street that do not have, uh, parcels owned to the south of them. Uh, but the pe- the folks that do own parcels to the south, that are but fourth, the unimproved Fourth Street, uh, do intend to, uh, combine their parcels with their parcel on Third Street.
Okay, but for you, but for the ones that don't own a parcel a- a- across the platted alley, what are you, how are you proposing to handle that? Cause you're saying combine them.
Yeah. They'll, they will get little, um, square, like, there'll be new squares, little rectangles created of new parcels, and ultimately, it'll be up to them to combine it with their, um, parcels. But we don't really have a ability, other than they won't be able to use those parcels for anything, to get them to join them. Uh, but typically, people do, after they become owners of them, join them themselves.
Okay. So you're okay with leaving a, a, a parcel that's just owned on, on one side of the vacated alley and just, people don't have access immediately to it?
Correct. Yeah, but they, they, uh, that, that's pretty standard throughout the city when these have occurred in the past.
Okay. Um, do, uh, do any commission members have questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Miller. I'm sorry, Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, Zuloff here. Um, as best I can tell, that, what, what I'm hearing is that that alley is not used. Anyway, in fact, it exists only in paper. Is that an accurate statement?
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. That's the way I understood it. So no- nobody relies on that alley for access to a garage or anything, so, very good. So even a future owner wouldn't have a need for it. Thank you.
Um, unless there are further questions, uh, would anybody care to make a motion based on what's been?
I would approve, Mr. Chairman, subject to the, uh, conditions outlined by the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Uh, a- anybody care to make a, a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. It's been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, I guess I would move to call the roll on the motion.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. The, the application has been approved for submission to the City Commission, or a recommendation to the City Commission. Uh, moving on to the next item of business, uh, it's a, um, Mr. Bob Waldock again has submitted a petition for the vacation on behalf of BSL Holdings LTD, a, uh, petition for vacation of Fourth Street located between parcels fifty-seven dash zero 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 eight seven point zero zero zero, uh, fifty-seven dash zero five 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 six point zero zero zero, fifty-seven dash zero two zero four five point zero zero zero, uh, to the north, and fifty-seven dash zero zero eight seven point zero zero zero, fifty-seven dash zero five 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 point zero zero to the south. Uh, uh, I'll let staff, uh, restate or educate us a little further on that, uh, petition for vacation.
Yep, thank you. Um, as shown on the screen, this is, uh, for the unimproved Fourth Street that is located just to the east of the unimproved Arthur Street. Uh, this also does not have any utilities located on it, and was, uh, found to have no objection from our Public Works Department. Um, in fact, if you look at the aerial view, you would, uh, without the parcel lines, you would not even recognize it as a, uh, roadway. Um, the applicant, there are only two applicants, both of them are two p- owners that needed to sign the petition for this, uh, roadway. Both of them did sign the petition, so it would be split down the middle, and then, um, parcels would be given to b- both adjacent property owners. Uh, for this application, we do, uh, recommend approval be contingent that the parcels are combined after, uh, vacation, so that no landlocked parcels be created. Um, and I believe Mr. Waldock is on the meeting with us, uh, but we do recommend that planning staff recommends approval to the City Commission contingent upon parcels being combined after vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Bolts. Uh, Mr. Waldock, if you're on, do you wish to add anything?
Only if you have questions.
Uh, I have no questions. Uh, do anybody on the commission have a question for Mr. Waldock or staff? Okay, hearing none, uh, would anyone, anyone care to make a motion, uh, on this petition for vacation of Fourth Street?
Mr. Chairman, this is David. I would be glad to do that.
Okay. Mr. Miller, thank you. Uh, you're making a motion for, uh, approval of the petition or, uh, recommendation to the com- the City Commission for approval? And is that subject to the staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, this is Jay Castile. I'll second that motion.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Castile. So it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion on the petition and the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is maybe a question for, for Greg, but, um, it's my understanding in these matters of vacation that, um, when, when the, uh, recently vacated property is added to the adjoining property, that actually kind of tends to bump up the tax roll, because, uh, it is therefore a taxable piece of property. Is that correct?
I, I would assume so. However, I'm not thoroughly, uh, educated on it, that it does actually occur.
Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
It wasn't audible here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Miller, could you state your question to Mr. Bolts?
Yes, um, can you hear me better now, Mike?
Yes.
I hear you.
Yeah, um, I, I've seen, uh, a number of vacations of alleys in the, the time I've been on the commission, and I just wanted to verify my understanding that when this property is, um, added to the adjoining property, that it makes the adjoining property bigger square foot-wise, presumably increases the value of that property, and therefore increases, um, the property tax on that property, and therefore is a public good to vacate that alley. And I just wanted to verify that I hadn't misunderstood that.
If, as chairman, if I could reply to that, uh, I, I think it's probably up to the auditor when they revalue, uh, the parcel that it's being added to, joined to. Um, but I guess I would not dispute your, your conception there that if it's bigger, it ought to be worth at least a little bit more. But again, I think that's up to the auditor.
Yeah, that, that's my point, that it takes, um, it takes property that is not on the tax rolls and puts it on the tax rolls, like, whatever value is on it.
That's correct. And that's, I, I think that's correct, yeah. So, okay. Um, I forget, did, did we just vote on that?
No, we haven't voted. We had a motion, a second.
Okay, motion, motion, okay, motion and second. That was, uh, this, a question during a discussion period. Um, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, uh, call the roll on the motion?
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes. Uh, I guess that's the whole roll, so the motion has passed, uh, for recommendation of the petition for approval by the City Commission. Um, moving on to the, on the agenda to the next matter, which is old business, uh, discussion regarding zoning near First, Second, and Third Street between Farwell Street and Cedar Point, and the Cedar Point dormitories. Um, if the staff could give us an update, that would be good.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so we did, uh, both Tom, uh, Horseman and I, uh, went out to this area and neighborhood last, uh, I believe it's, oh, almost two weeks now, and, uh, did discuss with some, some neighbors, uh, kind of what happened o- in the summertime with the applications, uh, and, uh, talked to some people and heard their feedback on, um, on what they thought. Um, so just as a reminder, uh, one application that is currently tabled showed the eight parcels that are highlighted to be rezoned to commercial recreation. Uh, the second application that's also tabled showed the highlighted parcels to be rezoned to commercial recreation. Um, after a lot of thought and discussion, both internally and with the neighborhood, uh, I believe that, uh, planning staff is recommending that, um, well, here's some comments from neighborhoods, uh, from the neighborhood. I talked to, uh, two residents, um, knocked on about, uh, fifteen, or not fifteen, five other houses, but these two just said, uh, they requested no change next to them. Uh, low-income rental and housing is needed in the city. Uh, the occupant has been there for sixty years and wouldn't like change. Um, she enjoyed the, uh, the single-family feel of the neighborhood around her. Uh, and then eighteen forty-two Third Street occupant, uh, said that they object to a change, um, and that he provided comments when notified earlier, and that was on a previous, um, application, or that, at the time of the previous meeting when these applications were tabled. Um, so with those being said, I don't know if, uh, uh, if Tom had any, uh, comments for the phone call he had with an occupant. Uh, but our recommendation is to rezone only parcels, uh, shown in the blue highlighted area to commercial recreation. Uh, they would be limited to parcels between First and Second Street only, and to not rezone anything south of Second Street. Uh, this would obviously encompass all of the eight parcels on the one application, but not all of the parcels on the other application. Um, and if this occurred, we'd probably do this at the December meeting, uh, just so we had ample time to notify residents and get those out. Um, so with that, I'll just leave it up to discussion and get the thoughts of the Planning Commission.
Um, Mr. Bolts, uh, two, uh, one observation, then, and then a question. I'm presuming on the graphic that you didn't go out and poke out the residents, you spoke them. Okay, okay.
Yes, spoke, spoke to.
Okay. Um, and do the app, are the applicants familiar with the recommendation that this would be done at the December meeting, and are they okay with, uh, a further delay at this point?
Um, this, I believe Mr. Waldock's still on the line. I don't know if he could speak to that, but this would be the first time he's heard of this recommendation, and I have not spoke to the other applicant, uh, which is another reason why I wanted to, um, wait till the December meeting, just so I could speak to them. And obviously, the other applicant can keep his application in, and it can be ho- heard separately, um, as part of that same meeting, during that same meeting.
Okay. Mr. Waldock, are you still on the line?
I am.
And, uh, I, I think it's a fair statement that the city is trying to move forward on these applications, whatever their recommendation is. Um, are you okay with dealing with this before year's end, rather than today?
Yes.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. Um, okay, do, can we just leave it on the table without a new motion to take it off the table, or, or to continue it, or just not pick it up off the table?
Well, this is a point of order, Mr. Chairman. We, we, we haven't taken it from the table, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we're, we're ju- we're just getting an update. Uh, the, the staff was charged with going to work on this, and we've got a staff update. And, uh, so, uh, we, I think if we had discussion on it, we would need to take it up from the table. But since we're not asking to discuss it, but we're simply getting an update, I think we can leave it at that. It's my opinion.
Okay.
Yep. And I think, um, so- And I think, um, so what I would, would request is that at the next meeting, after I speak to both applicants, um, we would untable the items for the December meeting, uh, which would ultimately have those two tabled items on the agenda as well as our rezoning, uh, application from the staff, and they would all be at this, the same, occur on the same meeting.
So your recommendation is that they be untabled at the November meeting for, uh, for action at the December meeting?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Um, well.
Is, was there any, uh, comments from Planning Commission about staff recommendation for the rezoning of, of these parcels, just so, uh, I could hear feedback from you all or from Mr. Waldock?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Just, just procedurally, I'm not, ma- maybe the law director could tell us if we should take it up from the table, if we're gonna discuss that. Um, I, I would ge- generally say that I would commend the staff on the work they're doing, uh, you know, not specific to my opinion on the, uh, on, on where we're going with it, but, but, uh, uh, I'm, I'm pleased that they're diligently, uh, making progress and, and have updated us what's happened.
Um, I, I, I would, I, I would tend to agree with Mr. Zuloff that, uh, if we're gonna lea- if it's, remains tabled, that we not discuss it at the meeting, but I would encourage, uh, staff and the members, you know, to work a little bit together, um, out of the meeting, and to update themselves on what's been done, and I think we can do it that way. That's the way I would prefer to do it.
I have, I have no problem taking it up from the table. Uh, I, I, I think, I'm, I'm, I'm of the understanding, though, that it will be on the agenda for the November meeting. Is that, is that, we can expect that, right?
Is that, is that question to staff?
Well, or, or, or to whoever's putting together our agenda, let's just expect it on the, I propose we expect it on the agenda. We would either need a motion now to take it up for, from the table, or we would have to simply place it on the agenda for adequate public notice for the, for the discussions.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll keep with the, uh, with all that being said, we'll keep with the, uh, timeline of taking it up from the table at the November meeting to be heard in December, uh, so that all the applications can be heard at that time.
Oh, oh, I see. I thought you were thinking about taking it up in November, but you're saying December. Thank you. Are we assured, are we reasonably assured that we will have a meeting in December?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, we, we have quite a bit of, uh, stuff in the pipeline, so I'm, I'm pretty confident we'll probably have to have something.
Well, I, I'm gonna say that that's good, then, so.
Yeah.
All right. Um, and any, any further comments or observations to be made by, uh, commission members? Uh, hearing none, I guess I would solicit a, a motion to adjourn the meeting because I don't see any, uh, is there any other business, uh, to be brought up that's not on the agenda?
Okay. True, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know, our, our new law director did join us today. Mr. Heil is, uh, is there, and he, uh, he's muted, but, um, there, there he is.
I see, okay.
So.
Welcome aboard.
Uh, excited to be here.
I can read your lips, okay.
Hopefully you can hear it now.
Okay, I can, yeah. Welcome aboard, Pete McGory.
Is now exiting.
Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, I'll look forward to meeting you in person.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Looking for, working with everyone.
Yes. Um, okay, uh, I guess, uh, unless there's no other business, uh, I will solicit a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Uh, all in favor, should I? I?
Bye.
Okay. All right, folks, thank you. Um, see you soon, stay well. Meeting adjourned.